My granddad used to use that and I never did figure out, does that mean that you're tolerating the world or you're tolerable to the world? I didn't get that cleared up.
Depends on whichever way you want to interpret it, I guess, huh? Yeah. Farmers happy. Oh my goodness.
One twenty-four hour period, they had eight inches.
Well, wasn't that hurting their crops though?
That boy told me he lost about a hundred and fifty.
I'll call this meeting of the Jefferson County Board of Zoning Appeals to Order. Mr. Brooks, would you open this tonight before we pray, please, sir?
God, thank you for this county. Thank you for these people that have come out tonight. I hope we can all be respectful of one another, towards our opinions and just have a nice civil meeting and do what's right for Jefferson County, do what's right for these citizens. There's no doubt you've blessed Jefferson County and we want to do right by our, by our properties. Through Jesus I pray, amen.
Amen. Mr. Practice, will you please, in the pledge?
Let's all stand and say a pledge of allegiance. Attention, move, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Practice. Okay, I trust that you received your packets and had a chance to look at the minutes from last month's meeting. If there are no changes or corrections, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
Proper motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. The first item, we, well, we have citizens input for BZA and we have several papers for citizens input, but I think they all fall into the planning commission meeting tonight. I've got the stack over here. Got somebody. Okay. Will you step to the podium, please? If you would state your name and your address.
Can I pass these out?
Yes, sir.
They say a picture's worth a thousand words, right? Think I want to show her. She don't know how many I needed.
You know. We're good. Okay, so this is all concerning the variance request on a side setback for the covered porch addition being constructed at 1915 Abilene Trail by Steve and Lisa Buford?
Yeah, he's a neighbor, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yes, and that survey map is actually my survey map that I had, the highlighted part line there is actually the property line between me, him and myself.
Okay.
Okay. First off, my name's Jim Fox, I live on Abilene Trail. First off, I am excited for the Bufords for getting, for being able to remodel and reconstruct and et cetera. I am happy for them. My concern is that they want to color outside the lines. What I mean by it, they began construction about May 22nd. They didn't bother getting a permit until July 25th. Then, they knew all along they were building beyond the established template setbacks. And then they were forced to get a property survey to verify that they were in violation of that and ask for a variance on August 2nd. They continued to build even though they did not have the proper permits to do so. And so, the mobile home was already within the setbacks. It's grandfathered in, I understand that. But they chose to build a roof above it with a two-foot overhang, so the setback being eight, the trailer being eight feet, well, with the overhang is now less than six feet. And my, and they planned to redo and enlarge the deck off the back and in some spots it's just barely over three feet off the setbacks and put a roof over. I'm sure when this Buford speak, they will tell you that my garage that is next door to them is over the setbacks as well. Now, this is over the front setbacks, not the side backs setbacks, and this is true. The difference is, I went and got my permits, got my permission and got the variances before I began construction. So, I made sure everything was okay. Plus, I was replacing a carport that was already beyond the setbacks. And so, the carport was grandfathered in, again, I got my permits and everything I needed to do that. And in fact, I even set the setbacks, set the garage back another six feet from what the survey map shows. The Bufords are not residents of this county. They have several rental properties in Knox County and Jeff County. I believe in all likelihood, given the scope of the work they're doing, in that the decks they're building on this mobile home is going to be three times the size of the mobile home itself, that this is either going to turn into an Airbnb or a rental property. And so, they're doing this to help them make a profit. They haven't been to the property over once, twice a year in ten years. They have thumbed their noses at this board about the construction just to make money. I am asking the board to be consistent in this matter in that I would not permit it to further encroach any further than what was existing and I'm asking the board to apply the same rules today. And that's all. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Mr. Fox, did you get a variance for that garage? I don't remember.
Yes.
You need it.
Yes.
What year?
That was about ten years ago. I got the permit, I got permission.
Okay.
And I was told I could do it.
We just didn't see it.
I wanted to make sure it was done before I asked, before I started construction.
Okay.
Just to make sure I didn't, in fact, the bank that I got the loan through required me to do that as well.
Okay. You went through this board and got a variance?
I went to the building board.
This is the board you had to go through?
Well, I did not go through this board, no. I got permission from the building code office.
No, they can't give you permission.
Well, somebody did.
It had to be this board, so anyway, that's beside the point. I just wondered if you'd got one or not.
But again, I did not encroach any farther than what the pre-existing.
Yeah, but you are encroaching the front setbacks, right?
Yes.
As is a lot of neighbors out there. A lot of, yeah, a lot of mobile years.
Right, but you know, that's the whole reason for setting these ordinances and doing these setbacks and stuff to get things standardized.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Do we have any other citizens input for the board of zoning appeals? Okay, the first item on the agenda would be the variance request on the side setback for the covered porch addition being constructed at 1915 Abilene Trail by Steve and Lisa Buford, or the Buford chair. If you would step to the podium.
I've got a few pictures they sent in and you should have had sent in your packets, but I don't know if you got this letter.
We didn't get any.
No. You didn't get nothing, you didn't get this?
Yeah, I was that.
Okay, well, here's a copy of their survey, which is probably going to be just like this, and here's some pictures and it's probably what he had. And by the way, Jordan had had a death in his family in Michigan and he couldn't be here tonight, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Tim. And here's a letter from Mr. Buford, so. And it's like a three and a half, four-foot variance that he's going to need.
Right. So, just this little corner here is all he's asking for?
Just that little corner area and the covered porch off the backside.
Well, it's covering the trailer, I believe, I don't think it's.
The porch is not going to be covered. It's always there.
Well, the, the front porch is.
Yeah, but that's something that's not encroaching.
It's not encroaching, okay.
I talked to Jordan about this and, and of course, the planners are all the same, everything out there, or not everything maybe, but a lot of things out there is encroaching. And so, he didn't have a problem with the variance on this. A lot of that stuff, I ponderosa back in there, built years and years ago.
Just a question. So, we're putting a new roof on the mobile home and it's not going to encroach, but we got a front porch that we're going, and it is going to encroach.
No, no, it's the, it's the back.
Yes, sir, it's the back.
Or you can tell it.
Yes, sir, it's on the back side. It's like a span there. It's about like a wood span there and it's actually open. It's right around the corner. It's the way the trailer was put in there.
It's on the side, well, it's all.
So, I'm confused. Yeah, I am too. So, the porch or the deck off the back's not going to be covered?
Yeah, the deck's in the front end.
Yeah, it's in the front. Facing the lake is where the porch is, actually.
So, it's not?
It's just the back corner.
Yeah, it's right there on the corner, yes, sir. Well, it's right up there.
Right up the elements.
Yes, sir, right there, right there, that's.
So, the porch is facing the lake, are we considering that?
No, it's not that, facing the lake's not it, right?
No, sir.
It's the other side.
It's side facing the neighborhood.
It'd actually be the back side.
That's what I'm thinking. Okay. It's where the wellhouse is.
Yes, sir, yeah.
So, but that is going to be a new porch, right?
No, no, it's not a porch. It's put a roof over the mobile home.
Yeah.
And it's hanging over the roof part.
That, all that, that's what I'm confused about. Yeah, me too. That's, if we look where the eight foot is, it shows a porch or a deck off the back of the trailer going close to that.
Well, there's a back door out there coming off the outside. It has a deck right there.
Okay, but you're not covering that deck. That's already existing.
That's already existing, yes, sir.
Okay.
It's that corner down there towards the property.
The only thing we're talking about is the overhang on the new roof.
Yeah, it's twenty inches on that part out there is what it is, the actual overhang.
That's all it is?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe three and a half more feet there.
So, they see why that's it, this deck's on it. It's done there. How long's that deck been there?
Well, we've owned this for seventeen years. It's been there since.
Been at home now?
Four years, sir, yeah. I think ninety-five was when the trailer was put in there and so, it was somewhere around. We've not done anything to it.
That's a bit detrimental. No, I don't want to. Fox, all right, there. Does everybody understand what you're doing? Okay. We're looking at a twenty, twenty-four inch overhang on a new roof on the trailer that's encroaching and he's asking for an advance of two foot, three foot?
It's about two foot, sir. It's a, and it comes at an angle there and part of it's not actually on the line, just, it's a short span there. It's like eight or ten, eight to twelve foot right there. This encroaching.
So, right now, it's eight. So, the overhang is.
Yeah.
It's two feet. If you figured two feet, you're still six five four, six and a half feet out.
Is it intruding on anything else? Is it bothering anything else?
Three and a half feet.
Three and a half feet.
That's why I like the variance.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Everybody understands?
Yeah.
Okay. The three and a half foot variance, what is the pleasure of the board in this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve grant this variance of three and a half feet for the overhang on this manufactured home.
Okay, we have a proper motion, we have a second.
Sir.
Is there any more discussion? If not, vote, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Do you need your copy back, sir?
Yeah, I'll be fine.
Is this the only one we got?
No, no, we're, yeah, you want to keep that.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last item of business on the board of zoning appeals. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll call to order the planning commission meeting and again, I trust you got your minutes and your packets and had a chance to review those. Are there any corrections, the changes to those?
Motion to approve.
We've got a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
Proper second, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Citizens input, and we've got several people that have filled out paperwork tonight for citizens input. You'll be limited to three minutes per person and I ask for the sake of time that if the person who has went in front of you or who has already gone has made the same comments, had the same topic to discuss, with that, that you step aside and let the next person go. That way, we don't just keep hearing the same thing over and over again. I'd ask that you be polite and be considerate. We're going to do this in orderly fashion and with that, we'll call the first person to vote it. Do I have a, Ms. Stephanie, I'm just thinking that is Porter. Is that correct, Stephanie Porter?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is Stephanie Four, I live at twenty-two, twenty-five Cademont Road. I'm here tonight to implore you to reject the site plans for best. They are, at best, a disaster. Not letting the fire department in, the fence line, if a fire happens, it's just ridiculous. No water up there and it says in their site plans that it's to be determined. That needs to be determined before they're allowed to build. Plain and simple. I mean, it's, you're just asking for a bad disaster to happen. I don't want to be on the six o'clock news and the ten o'clock news because we had something in our power to stop before it happened. We should be able to feel safe living in our homes, in our own neighborhood, where our children play, where our children go to school. And that won't happen if the best power plant is allowed to put in their storage system. There's no way. Our children already have enough to worry about without having to worry about being on lockdown at school because a fire happened and we got toxic fumes everywhere going downwind toward the schools. Or us having to be subjected to be staying in our homes and not be able to go to work and not be able to go outside because of toxic fumes that happened because of a fire. Their website says that they've talked to the fire department, when I know they haven't, except for one time over a year ago. They want to train the fire department. Well, that training should already be taking place before now. When the site plan is going in, they're going to have to be prepared for those batteries to come in on trucks. Massive trucks are going to be coming through here hauling them batteries and we've already had three more plant fires since our last meeting. Since our last meeting, three more, to the fact that New York stopped it. New York has put a stop to putting more bests in the state of New York and they put together a task force team to be investigating these. And no offense, if a best plant catches on fire and if it's under investigation for a fire, it ain't working because it ain't online. Bottom line is, is when them fires happen, who's going to be the one holding the bill? All of us taxpayers in this room. All of us. It's not going to be them coming back. It's not going to be them coming back to bring us more batteries for free because they caught fire. And no offense, I've never known any company in America or otherwise to make six million of everything perfect. Nothing is ever perfect and you have to be prepared and that's what these meetings are for. These meetings are to stop this thing from happening before it even gets started. And it should have never been up to four people to put it into A1 zoning in the first place. There's a lot more things besides just this best that need to be addressed here tonight, but this is what I'm here for. It's to stand up for not just me, but the six hundred other folks.
Your three minutes is up, ma'am, and thank you very much, Mr. Porter, for coming. If I can have everybody's attention, please. If you want to applause or affirm what's being said, I'm going to ask that you would hold that to the end of the citizens input. Yeah, just to keep things moving along and we want to be able to hear everything that's being said. So, if you would, keep it to the end. If not, you'll be asked to leave the courtroom. And if you refuse to leave, we'll have you escorted out. I don't think we'll have to do that, but that's how we're going to handle it from here on out. Just keep that down and you'll have ample time at the end of the citizens input to give the applause or affirmation, okay? Thank you all very much for that. Next would be Ms. Sandra Eders? Is Sandra here?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Sandra Eders and I live at nineteen thirty-seven Lafayette Road. I'm not as knowledgeable as the lady there, but I'm here as a mother, a grandmother and a citizen. And I'm just asking that everyone please think of all of us that live in that area. I have children, grandchildren, all that live right around. I don't, and the reason I'm even here is, the surveyors were out in front of our house for several days. My husband went out there and asked them while they were there, they're putting the entrance to this place right in front of my house, okay? So, this is what I'm saying. I moved to the country for the peace and quiet. I'm getting ready to retire from the education system. I don't want to walk out on my porch and look out through there and see a factory with six million batteries. Batteries that has what God knows what in them. Is this going to affect my children, my grandchildren, the ground, the animals, the water, the air? I'm asking you all to please think of us as a person, as someone who loves where I live. Please don't put this in front of me so I have to sit on my front porch and see this all through my retirement. I'm asking you that, please, for my children and my grandchildren. And I'm just, that's just me. That's just me asking you. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eders. Again, only applause. We'll hold it to the end of everyone speaking, to the end of the citizens input, okay? Thank you very much. Next would be Joanne Cummins?
John.
John. Looks more like a A than a H, I'm sorry.
I've spoken several times on this issue. It's getting tiresome. Pilot was before Jesus and Jesus had just said something to him. He said, whoever hears my voice will know the truth. Pilot said, what is the truth? You know, he became in history, one of the buffoons of history because in front of him was the truth incarnate. Bible says the truth, you'll know the truth and the truth will set you free. Very important statement and there's many truths in life. I went to the University of Tennessee and they'll tell you there are no truths. They're lying. So, in order to know the truth, we have to know it's false. And I want to look at what's underneath all of this. What is underneath this idea of backup energy solutions? What's behind it? And it's the idea that there's a problem with peak power. Why is there a problem with peak power? Because TBA has been taking off the coal backup plants, but God has given us resources, and I said this another time, he's given us coal, he's given us natural gas. In Tennessee, East Tennessee, he's given us oil. We have nukes and we have water to produce electricity. These batteries don't produce electricity, they're storing it. We've already heard they're inherently dangerous and they will explode and we will have fires and we will be, the feds will come around and we'll have to leave. So, the problem's coming down from Washington DC, but it goes further than that. It's coming from international groups, the United Nations Agenda Twenty-One, if anybody's ever heard of that. And so, they have been lying about the number one thing, that we're under a climate emergency. We are not. I proclaim to you, everyone here knows, we're not under a climate emergency. I proclaim to you, everyone here knows, we're not under a climate emergency, it's a lie. And that lie is based on the IPCC, a United Nations group, just like the WHO, the professional, well-paid liars. East Anglia that put out false computer models in England, and especially Michael Moore, professor from Penn State, who made the false hockey stick, the idea that carbon dioxide is a dangerous pollutant. I tell you, that's a lie. But I want you to all think about The Wizard of Oz. How many of you have seen The Wizard of Oz? Yeah, most, or have you read the book? In The Wizard of Oz, there's a little, you know, there's a scary wizard called, he's spinning a tail, he's scaring the people, and in front is Dorothy and her friends, and he's got a scary looking face, but there's a Toto. And we've had, there's a Toto that went in and found the standard banner at one point, maybe several months ago, and found in the hidden details was the hidden agenda of this group over here from out of state. And it's not their fault, it's not their fault at all, they're only following international rules. But it's up to us to, to look at, look at ourselves. When you pull that curtain back, there's just little men there pulling levers. When you pull the curtain back up in DC, there's little men pulling the levers. Have the courage to see those little men there that are pulling levers, stand up to them. Because I'm going to tell you something, the people in Newmarket, we have a heart and we have brains, and we also have courage, and we have a home. And the people in Jefferson City, White Pine, Strawberry Plains, Mossy Creek, Dandridge, we have a home and we want to keep it, and we have a moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cummins. That worked. Thank you. Next, Tom Hodges.
Thank you very much. My name is Tom Hodges, I live at 516 Turtle Dove Trail in Dandridge. And what I'm not here to do is repeat a lot of the information about the disasters around the battery energy storage systems, which I think most of us are well aware of by now. If they're not, well, you know, they, they should be, they should educate themselves a lot about that. I am puzzled, though, on that area, why there are so many people still puzzled and unclear about specifically where the board stands about the information that's out there related to those incidents, and I think that needs to be fixed, and it's within the board's power to, to fix that through more clarity and more transparency, frankly, from, from your standpoint. But I'd like to set that aside for a second, take a little bit of different perspective. The board, you know this better than I do, you've been ridiculed and criticized a lot about this issue, sometimes very harshly, on occasion, that harshness has been accusation and opinion, not backed up by hard evidence. You know, and in all fairness, you know, that's, that's not fair to you. However, I think there's a very specific reason why you see people so upset about this issue regardless of their approach. Because the behavior of the board, frankly, and their lack of transparency throughout this whole process and lack of clarity, I, I believe has led to people, you know, questioning, you know, why that is, and questioning, frankly, the motives, you know, that are behind that. Is that justified? I don't have any hard evidence one way or the other, so frankly, I don't know. But I do know that it has created a perspective in the community, that has created the, the attitudes and the approaches that you see here. Some unrelated topics that kind of paint this background a little bit. We live in a world now where critical race theory is starting to creep into our school systems, and people see that. We live in a world where diversity and equity and inclusion is creeping into our private and public institutions and our schools, all concurrent with school budgets year over year from last year to this year significantly increasing. People aren't blind, they see that, all right? They, we live in a world now where they're, they're kind of forced to question almost everything that they see in here. They get the federal government telling them, see, the economy is improving and it's in great shape, when all they have to do is live their, their real lives and they see other lives. So now you take this situation, put it in the context of everything else that's going on out there in the outside world, you know, misleading about masks and lockdowns and vaccine mandates, you know, all of that, and you put this situation, and what people see as a significant lack of transparency and clarity from the board into all that context, is there really any surprise that people are suspicious about the motivation, whether it's justified or not? Okay? The community needs clarity and we need transparency. Okay?
Mr. Hodges, you're about 20 seconds over right now.
I'm sorry?
You're about 20 seconds over on your three minutes right now.
Then, I will stop. I think, I think you get the point. God's watching, community's watching, the sleeping bear's kind of been kicked and he's upset, all right? So, please, look at that person looking back at you in the mirror, and let's all ask ourselves, have we done everything we can and have we done the right thing?
Thank you, Mr. Hodges.
Appreciate that.
Next on the, on the list would be David Nelson. Is David Nelson here?
My name is David Nelson, I live at 470 Judson Road in Strawberry Plains. The Jefferson County Commission recently enacted legislation which tells this commission two things. First, the legislation tells this commission what the development standards must be for any BES facility. And second, the legislation tells you not to approve any site plan for any BES facility until after January 2024. This commission has a duty and an obligation to follow county commission legislation. On the other hand, I expect tonight that Plus Power will attempt to discredit this legislation by introducing legal arguments to challenge its validity. I would suggest to you that this action by Plus Power, should it occur, is inappropriate and is not relevant to this commission's duties and obligations. If Plus Power chooses to challenge county commission legislation, the appropriate forum to do so is a court of law. This commission is not a court of law. So please do not be persuaded, confused, or even worse, intimidated by any presentation of legal arguments by Plus Power. This commission's job simply is this, to review the Plus Power site plan and determine if that site plan meets the requirements approved by your county commission. Furthermore, if this commission's duty and obligation is to abide by the moratorium not to approve any site plan for any BES facility until after January 2024. Thank you.
Is Jitko here?
Thank you. My name is Jitko, I live in 1870 Sam Withergillane. Twenty-five years ago, I spoke in this chamber trying to stop TBA from taking part of my land to build, guess what, Dumping Valley Substation. And it is next right to my property, and I'm very concerned about it, like the previous speaker who said, I did not have a lot of information coming from the commission about this battery storage place. I did not hear about it until maybe three weeks ago. I've attended meetings for the last two or three sessions, and nobody wants this battery storage. It's dangerous and it's not safe for our kids, and I think you guys should reject it and not approve this site. And I do blame them, and like John said, do not blame them. They are the ones who want to put it in, and I hope they can go home and tell their kids that they came to a place that nobody wants them to be here, nobody wants, wants to have this storage place in our county that could harm our children. Where are they going to tell their children? They're going to keep their children safe when our children might not be safe.
Do we have a Mr. James Nolan?
James Nolan, 714 McGuire Road, Newmarket, Tennessee. And I talked to the Newmarket Fire Department Chief, and he said that a few months ago, they brought it up at one of his meetings or something, but, but nothing's been done since then. They had no training set up, they had no site plan of anything, and he said that they're telling them that they do and they don't. And another thing, if you guys really care about Jefferson County, like you opened up your meeting, you could stand behind the people in the community. You know, this, if it blows up or something, you know, 50, 100 mile radius, you'd have to evacuate. That includes a whole lot more people in Newmarket, so you people will need to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Do we have a Mr. Mike Norton here?
Good evening, guys, ladies and gentlemen, the board. My name's Mike Norton, and I live at 825 Summit Ridge Road, and I'm not going to try to dazzle you with brilliance or battle you with some bull, but as I was sitting back here, this, this man was telling his kids what's going to be going, and, and I really appreciated that, and that's what we all should be doing with our families or educating our children about how things take place in government and how to, how to change things if you don't particularly like. So tonight, I am going to implore you guys to listen to the community. I think there's 839-ish signatures online, and just being out there knocking on doors, meeting the people that are deeply concerned. And, and I just ask you, if there's anything that we could possibly do to limit or stop, please, please do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. Next, Marion Knight.
I printed too many papers. You can paper the one. Okay. Marion Knight, 440 West Main Street, Dandridge. I've looked at the Plus, Plus Power package, and I have questions, lots of them. My question's for you. One, how can you approve this when it does not appear to have hydrants? Two, how can you approve this when it's closer than five miles to schools? Three, where's the TBA, where's the AEC? Are they supporting this? Four, I just heard today that because of past mining, there could be potential sinkholes in the area of the proposed BES. Have you looked into this? Five, is the county just going to give up without a fight because it's afraid it might lose in court? Since the plan they are submitting is so much larger than anything they've spoken about before, why wouldn't the revised resolution apply to them? Now, questions I'd like you to ask the developer. One, the newest design of containers was reportedly in the two, in the two BES, the newest design of containers was reportedly in the two BES in Warwick, New York that recently caught on fire and released noxious toxins into the surrounding area. The toxins were within normal range. Where are your studies about the long-term health effects of this? Two, what will happen if there's a wildfire in the area? What have you included to protect your facility? Three, one water tank is listed on several pages of the plan. Is there just one for the whole site? Where is it? How many gallons of water are in it? It took 3,800 gallons to control the recent vehicle fire in White Pine, that was one battery. Are there hydrants proposed? Because there's a symbol for fire hydrants on your legend. Five, what type of security fence are you proposing? Will it secure your facility from intentional harm? Six, page 30 of your emergency plan talks about an evacuation of the area. Exactly how will this be done? Seven, you've been saying for months that your plan, when submitted, would be 200 containers with 6 million batteries on 26 acres. Now, it has changed substantially. It's 276 containers. Given the same number of batteries per container, that will be over 8 million batteries. You complained we were changing the rules in Midstream, aren't you doing the same thing? And eight, your plan includes an additional 38 acre lot, and there are many more landowner names on the plan. How many of Butters have you met with? How many more landowners are you negotiating with? Will you be surrounding the entire TBA substation with BES facilities? How large is this project intended to be in reality? Please deny this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nolan. Do we have a Doug Ibberson here?
Good afternoon, my name is Doug Ibberson. I am a school board member representing school board District One, however, I am speaking as an individual tonight. The proposed plant is not in my district, but the school that it will affect is in my district. I was elected to the school board because I'm a businessman, and I'm here to tell you that this BES project is bad business, the worst business. The last year, there have been more than 30 articles and broadcasts made if you were to Google "New York lithium battery fires." That's just in New York. If you were to Google "lithium battery fires," there are hundreds of articles and broadcasts over the last year. The definition of lunacy is doing the same thing over and over and over again and expecting a different result. These plants have been proved to be dangerous, to be combustible, and to be extremely non-researched. I'm telling you that because I am not only a resident of Jefferson County, I am a limited partner in an energy production company called Future Energy. We are located in California, we are a geothermal, which means geyser type steam comes up, turns rotors, produces energy. We need to store that energy. We use solid-state batteries. Why do we do that? Because over and over and over again, we have been approached by companies like Plus Power to convert our storage batteries into lithium. We have determined over and over and over again, based on extensive research, that lithium batteries are unsafe. We have gone to court and challenged them, they have come to court and challenged us, and even in a crazy state like California, we have prevailed. Please deny this, I am telling you as an informed energy producer, lithium batteries are unsafe and will put our children at Piedmont School in jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there is no topic on a, Mr. Gary Lindsey? Is Gary here?
Yeah, Gary Lindsey, 913 Dollar Road, Newmarket, Tennessee. I've lived within three miles of this proposed site, I hold 65 years. I'm just going to throw out a few hypotheticals, hypo, how can you talk? Hypothetical questions. Home insurance in this area, is that going to raise your property insurance, your home insurance? Maybe not this year, maybe not next year, but I'd say it's coming, in my opinion. We've talked a lot about fire, I'm not going to expound on that, but do we want another gathering wire fire, wildfire coming through Jefferson County, or do we want a fire like is going on the way right now? Or do we want a fire like what's going on away right now? It's, I mean, if conditions get right, you know, dry, windy, we could have that. Lady talked about toxic fumes released. Could anybody in this room tell me if those toxic fumes cause cancer? I'm a time cancer survivor, I'd like to know. If these chemicals get in their water system, will it cause cancer? Yeah, that's all I have to say, really, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey. I have another one with no topic listed, but Randall Thomas. Mr. Thomas here? And then another one with no topic, Chris Mash?
Chris Mash, Kenley Woman, McGuire Road. I want to start out with a prayer, he said, you know, let's think about Jefferson County and the citizens of this county. It's time to put a stop to this mess that's got as far as it has. You know, a lot of this is happening right here at the same board right here. Over the months, the county, you know, the citizens found out recently, it's time to send that bunch packing, you know. If you're worried about a lawsuit, let them go to court. Because a lot of citizens here tonight are ready to get together and file suit on them and the county, if that's what it takes. It's time for y'all to step up, do your jobs, or step out and find your duty job to do. Because what's going on right now? An idiot putting a bullet what's went in under agriculture. I mean, this is uncalled for. We shouldn't be at this point tonight. People are mad, they're upset. Y'all are not representing our county like you should. It's out of hand. So, it's time for some y'all to come back to reality and get your heads out of your backsides, is the best way I know to put it. Enough is enough. And I mean, it's time for y'all to step up and do what's right. We shouldn't be at this point. If you're afraid of them going to court, you need to be afraid of the citizens taking people to court, too. We've had enough. And I was on fire a couple of years ago. This is not safe. I wouldn't send a firefighter in to someone, no. And I trucked for twenty-nine years over the road. I've had a nuclear hazmat. I've been into all different sites. I had to be, they had to be guards there. You cannot sit this kind of hazardous material with nobody on-site monitoring it. Somebody in Texas, they catch it on fire, they're in Texas. They couldn't care less. You know? Just use your brain, people.
Thank you. Last one we have on the list, citizen input, be Jim Fox. Jim spoke with us earlier tonight.
I get to be last. Hi, I'm Jim Fox. I live on Everly Trail, which you guys already know. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Reliability, safety, and affordability. At the last meeting, that's one of the representatives of Plus Power mentioned as being the cornerstones of their company. Let's talk about reliability for a minute. They're coming here to spend millions and build a world's largest battery facility to stop a single isolated rolling blackout. There we have it. I would submit that the biggest issue with reliability is storms, down trees, poles, and lines. I would think that these resources would be better served addressing these issues and even possibly putting in home generators. I mean, nine million batteries? How many people live in this county? That would be, what, ten or twelve each? Safety, they say it will be safe. Do we have any independent confirmation that it is safe? PG&E said it was safe to mine their gas until Aaron Brockovich showed up. Big Tobacco said it was safe until we all know how that happened. The military said Camp Lejeune was safe for forty years. And we know what, you can't even turn a TV on without seeing an advocate of Lejeune. They are saying it's safe. And they're parading people up here that are on their payroll and that wrote the book on safety, on their payroll, that are saying it's safe. Why are they unwilling to implement the safety measures that the county has asked for if it is, if they are safe? And instead, we're seeking a legal loophole and intimidation. Are they offering anything to the volunteer fire departments while they're making a profit? And while the fire department's working, obviously, for their volunteers? Are they really concerned about safety or just profits? What is their safety record? How many 911 calls have they had at these locations for any of them? Affordability. Now, as I understand, the third item, affordability, as I understand it, they plan to buy power from TVA at a low price and sell the same power back to TVA at a much higher price because that's the only way to get a return on that investment and make money. Now, who does TVA sell to? Who does Appalachian Electric sell to? Who will be paying the higher rates on their bills for the same electricity at higher rates? Is this affordable and for who? Are there any independent studies that show that this is even needed in this area over a single isolated instance? Lord knows, California needs it. Knowledge, and lastly, I would say, knowledge is power. Plus Power is, right now, is the only ones that have the knowledge of what's going on and what's really happening. Has anybody from, any government official from this county visited any other BESS site? Has any county official representing this county talked to any other government official that has anything, that's had anything to do with these sites? And if so, what was the feedback? What did we learn? And if we haven't visited any, why not? Because knowledge is power. Why are they pushing so hard and investing millions if they do not have a deal with TVA? Is there something they're not telling us? What does TVA stands? What does Appalachian stands? You know, this board is charged for representing the county, not an out-of-state business, representing the needs of this county. Again, I would say, knowledge is power, and right now, Plus Power is the only ones that have the knowledge of this business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Mr. Chairman, I came in late and didn't get an opportunity to fill out what I have three minutes for you.
That's, I would love to, but last month's meeting, we held fine, but if you didn't fill out paperwork, you...
Are you a fire chief?
I am a fire chief.
If you would hold your applause and hold your comments, we'd done eaten the part of the three minutes he could have had. So, just by with us for a minute. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to hear him speak.
I'd like to hear him speak.
You need a motion?
We don't need a motion for all in agreement of fact. Go ahead, please, please. State your name and address, sir.
I'm Billy John Kirtan. I live on Murph Road in Jefferson City, actually in Talbot. I'm not here speaking on behalf of my fire department. I'm here speaking as a citizen. I'm a sixth-generation Jefferson County. And I don't care whether you just moved into this county or you've been here for a hundred generations. We fought a fire, it has got to the point, that's thirty-eight years in it, fired. And we fought a fire back at New Market, every department in this county, like Bay's Mountain Road, several months ago. You need to get somebody from Shady Grove up here. They made us stop filling off of their hydrants because we sucking water out of people's houses at Piedmont Store. Now, think how close that is to this site. There's not enough, they don't have enough water down there. We've not been offered that kind of training. We know what it's like. I mean, fire departments, we see this, we get new stuff on it, on cars. Not nothing this may be. But, you know, it don't affect me, but these are my brother and sister Jefferson Countyans. I come from the other end of the county to help speak and stand up for them. If, I don't know where these people are from, if they're from Texas, ask yourself one question, why don't they put it in Texas where they live? Not where we live. But like I say, I'm not speaking on behalf of my department or any other fire department. But right now, in Jefferson County, on a house fire, automatically paging four departments because of manpower, four fire departments. If something happens down there, it will be East Tennessee. That's how many counties that you're going to bring in because you can't pull water from Shady Grove down there because their lines ain't going. I'm here to tell you, they came out, sent a man out there and made us stop, told us to go miles and miles down the road and get on another highway. So, think about this. You know, it ain't always a good thing. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Okay, that finishes up the citizen's input. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's the final plat approval for a three-lot subdivision off of Lafayette Road and Doling Lane from New Market by Elizabeth Collins. Is anyone here to represent them?
Are the Collins here? Yeah, we got to have that. And if y'all have noticed on the ones we sent you out, Don Oliver didn't put a house spot on there. And we tried to call Don, and you tried to call him.
Mitch Seals?
Nobody got on.
We didn't have one sent out, there was not one package.
Oh, there were. Well, here they are. Yeah, I only got two. So, anyway, they're not, we tried all week to get ahold of Don Oliver. You know, our new rule is you got to put a house spot on there, and he didn't do it, as are a lot of the surveyors, but even Eddie Garrett had to call him today on one. They're forgetting. It's a new rule, I know. But it ain't her fault she couldn't get ahold of Don either. So, you may have to wait or approve it subject to Don putting it on there. I know Tom signed it, I do know that. He's checked off. Our new rules have to have a house site on those three lots that's on there. Have to show a house, a spot, propose, whether you put it there or not. That's something we probably don't... She's tried all week, and we've tried all week to get ahold of Don, so I don't know what else to put on that.
Can we approve it upon Don's approval? No. I mean, fix him, fix him. If we did it, it'd have to be subject to him putting an approved house site on there. So, I guess if they're, Don, are placing for an approved house site, they would have to come back and force.
You're going to get in trouble if you do that. I hate it. But it sounds like we do best to postpone until this is right.
Because our rules say it's got to be seven percent, whatever the lot is, buildable, and it's got to have a slope in it, too. So, you got no topo on us to know.
Well, you don't have to topo on five lots, so...
Yeah, but I mean, we've still got to hold, it's got to be seven percent on less than ten, on a ten percent slope or less. So, since there's no topo on that, we don't know.
No, not now, we don't know. You know, basically, what he's going to do is, is when he puts a site, when he puts that on there, he's going to say that it meets all the guidelines that we request. But without that, we can't make that determination, even if there was something that, even to put it in there.
Can he get...
Do you understand, Lord?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Can he get that taken care of before the next meeting?
I'll try.
Yeah. You can go ahead and get on the agenda for next month.
Can we go ahead and put that under new business?
I'll put it on next month. They put it on next month.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that?
I make a motion, I make a motion to postpone.
Got a proper motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Proper motion, a second, is more discussion? All those in favor of postponing item A on the agenda to next month? Is that being known by saying aye?
Aye.
That is true. Mr. Chairman, I move to reconsider that motion.
There's been a move to reconsider the motion?
And if I get a second, here's the reason. Mr. Terry just said, state rules say that if we don't take any action, sixty days, it's automatic. So, we'd be better off to deny this thing, reconsider that motion and make a motion to deny it.
Okay. Can, how do I, how do we override what I just did?
Somebody second system.
Somebody got a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, proper motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye. Then I'll make a motion to strike the verbiage postpone and amend it by adding deny to the plat.
And I'll second that.
Second, all those in favor? Any more discussion? Okay, all of them in favor, let me know by saying aye. Motion, pass, and just deny. The next item on the agenda, B, site plan review for Lakeside Getaway on Douglas, 1673 East Highway 2570, Dandridge, by Jason and Trina Messer.
We have a copy of that, your papers.
We do.
Thank you, guys, for allowing me to come speak and present my proposal to you. I'll make this quick, I know y'all are going to be busy tonight, so just real quick, just to tell you a little about myself, I'm a resident of Jefferson County, I've been in healthcare and church ministry for twenty-five years and a longtime camper since I was a child. So, we, my wife and I and the kids have looked at a lot of pieces of property and put in a primitive campsite, and we're asking to propose to expand that to some full-site hookups. So, that's basically what this is according to. I've talked with Billy Knight and Corbin Stewart to draw up this plan. They couldn't get to it, so I've done it to scale for you guys. And Corbin is working on a revised plan, but he didn't get it to me for this meeting. However, I've got thirty years of construction, twenty-five, thirty years of construction, and I've done this to scale for you. I've also talked with Tim Seals and Tom Carter on this matter several times prior to this meeting. Tom has been out to the side a couple of times and also has the kind of design laid out, suggested the design for the sewer for the site. There has been two septic systems already put in approved, and a third one would need to be approved for the actual campersites. I've designed this with all the setbacks in mind, with all the regulations for campground, fifty-foot boundary lines. Additionally, I've also worked with TVA on these plans, and all of this underway as well.
Does anyone have any questions for? Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. I got a couple. Basically here on your, your sites, uh, it looks like most of them are below the 1007 contour. So, are you telling me that TBA has given you written approval to put these sites below that, that contour line?
Not those particular sites, no, sir.
Okay.
The permit that is in the plans, or in the packet for you there that I gave you, is for my personal property. That permit includes multiple structures and other items that's already being used for this campground. TBA, um, there's no reason why they would have a problem with a gravel or concrete pad for a campsite. They do, they did approve me for electric all the way to the boat dock, which is all the way to the water. So there's, as long as the water, as long as the electric disconnect is above 1,003, they will approve that. These plans all extend between the 1,002.6 and the 1,007. There's a couple on the survey map that are slightly over the 1,002.6 line, but this property is so leveled by 1,004 inches of concrete, they will be above the 1,002.6 Billy, did you get to, or, um, Tom, did you get the drive out there? Tim, Tim, did you get the drive out there to that?
No, I didn't.
Um, I wish I had some video, one, put some video up for you guys so you can see the property. Property is remotely leveled, uh, all the area that I'm building on and wanting to expand into, it's a beautiful piece of property and a lake. I've also included in this packet for you some reviews from the customers that we've had this summer. We opened in June, uh, we've had approximately, um, 50, 51 stays from 37 different families, some of those are residents of Jefferson County, Sevier County and surrounding areas, as well as, we've had 13 different states represent and USN, somebody from Canada. We're trying to put in a five-star resort that will be nice for the county, bring in income for recreational and taxes to the county as well. Nothing major, not doing anchors down. It's a very small campground, but something that will be nice for the community.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. So, how much of this exists and how much is gonna be started from Brandon?
So the only thing that exists, uh, is what's on that TBA plat right now. Anything new, which is basically the 12 campsites, is, is the only thing in question with TBA.
Okay. Uh, I guess the, the question I have is, is on your access road coming in at this time, what, what is that surface?
It's gravel.
Okay.
It's, it's a level.
I think you understand, you have to pay the first 300 feet.
If it's more than 5% grade, it's not more than 5%.
No, no, that's, that's later on. The first 300 feet has to be paid, and then if there's any grade that goes over 5%, the remainder of that has to be paid, uh, during that, during that portion, right there. Uh, I, I guess.
Not, not to debate that, but I thought the rule was if it was over 5% grade.
That's, that's, that's if the other portion of your property is, is over 5%, then that part, portion has to be paid. But the first 300 feet has to.
First 300 has to.
Has to be paid. And anything over the 5% grade later on would have to.
That's not an issue, we'll make that happen.
Okay. Uh, because I'm, I, I just have some issues with, uh, what TBA is gonna approve here based on, uh, what I'm looking at. I mean, I know you've got electric and you've got water lines that are actually running out there below that area that could be flooded, and that's what I'm curious.
That's already on my current approval permit for TBA.
So TBA has already approved that?
Yeah, it's on the permit right there in front of me. To the structures that's on the map, which is below the 1,002 line, which is below where I'm putting the campsites. It all comes back to where your disconnect is. Your disconnect has to be above the 1,002.6, basically 1,003 line. From my understanding.
But they didn't approve your utilities, right? Or did they?
Water and electric, not sewer. Sewer, sewer has to be above the 1,002.6, which is the plan that me and Tom came up with, with the availability of the land and the property.
Well, the only other thing is, is this, is that. I understand your issue with not having your surveyors available to do this plan, but it states in our guidelines that this has to be presented, presented either by a licensed engineer or a licensed surveyor, uh, for this, for this very reason. And, uh, so, uh, I, I don't make, think, I, I understand what you've done here and this, whatever, I'm just saying, there are two things here that I don't feel like that meets the guideline. One is, is showing the 300 feet to be paid, and the other is, is the fact that this was not been signed and, and designed by a surveyor or an engineer.
I don't have a problem.
I understand, I understand your dilemma in, in getting them to do the work, but there again.
I don't have a problem with, with bringing that back. I mean, if we need to do a continuation, um, for next month, surely, um, I can get, Corbin Stewart's working on this for me now.
Okay.
And he was supposed to have it to me for today, but he didn't get it done.
Okay.
So as far as the paid, paid portion of the property, we can, we can work that into the budget, that's not a problem. So it's just, just a matter of them redrawing it in AutoCAD, basically taking what I've done and redoing it for you.
Okay. Any other questions? So based on that, Mr. Chairman, I, I think I would make a motion to deny it until we receive a, a proper, properly designed plan based on, with a, either a civil engineer or a surveyor.
Okay. So, so one question, if you did not, does that mean I gotta pay another 100 bucks to come back up here?
That's all.
Okay.
We have a motion to deny based upon having a proper plan by engineer or surveyor. Proper motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those, any more discussion? All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes?
All right, Jim, I'll get back on the schedule for next month.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So, you please, let's keep in these, or you won't go back? Okay, the, uh, next item on the agenda is site plan review for Dumplin Valley Energy Storage Facility to be located at 2019 Bay's Mountain Road, New Market, by Plus Power. Just plus. Power has some representatives here, sit there.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Fernando de Samanero Esteta, representing Plus Power, and you have provided the package with the site plan. Just wanna give a little bit of background, before you're familiar, just to go through what we've been through. We have been following the county's ordinance and guidance to go through this process. We met with the BCA, we met with this planning commission. We met with this planning commission earlier this year. Then we got approval, annuals approval from the regional planning commissions for the conditions that the planning commission set. And we are here to receive the approval for the site plan, following all the guidance that we received and following the ordinance. I want to introduce Chris Bowles and Melanie Davis, that are our attorneys in, in Tennessee, who will just provide a little bit more background on the site plan approval and the conditions that we're, we're complying with.
Thank you, Fernando. As a initial matter, we have a few materials prepared here, they're, with the exception of one letter that does outline how the company complies with the conditions, um, that its materials you've seen before. Would you guys like to copy of these?
Yes, sir. Listen.
That's one of the items, man. We have some.
Is there more?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, my name is Chris Bowles, uh, I'm a lawyer, I'm based out of Nashville. What you have there is a letter outlining the compliance with the conditions in the letter, uh, or conditions in the code. And behind that, in one, tab 1A, is a legal position statement and followed by Article 6 of the zoning resolution and the, uh, letter that the BCA sent back in December of 2022 with respect to this project. So I'll ask that a copy of this binder be placed in the record of this proceeding, and also that a copy of the full zoning resolution in Jefferson County also be included in the record. So, I, we thought it would be helpful if we just gave a quick, uh, overview of what needs to happen here. This is the Ministerial Act, the review of the site plan in accordance with the law in effect as of the date of the application that was submitted. As we all know, and that's outlined in the legal position letter, uh, included in that binder, the county commission took actions on July 17th to amend the conditions in Resolution 2023-16 that were approved by this planning commission and the other regional planning commissions in Jefferson County. As stated in more detail in that letter, the amendments that were made by the county commission were not referred back down to the planning commissions, they were substantial in nature, and as a result of not following the process outlined in the Tennessee code, which is that if they approved and recommended by the planning commissions, uh, and then followed by a public hearing, consideration by the county commission, and approval by the county commission, uh, those additional amendments are void and of no effect. And so, we ask that the site plan, this thing proposed here today, be considered in light of.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, thank you very much, sir.
Is any better? We ask that the site plan that's been submitted here be considered in light of the law that's in effect as of today, which is Section 6.6 of the zoning resolution and the determination made by the BCA in its letter dated December, uh, 7th, 2022, determining that battery energy storage systems are permitted use in the A1 zone. As outlined in the, the, the letter at the front of the binder, uh, this site plan meets all the necessary requirements, and in addition to that, as Fernando just mentioned, it also meets the conditions that were approved by this planning commission in Resolution 2023-16. We have annotated copy of those conditions in the back of that binder, um, to establish compliance with those as well. We have, uh, as Fernando mentioned, a variety of experts here to answer any questions you may have, uh, but with that, we ask respectfully that you approve the application.
I have some questions for the last one.
Okay, go. You're fine, go right ahead, sir.
I'm gonna try to speak into the mic, but if I can, I understand it, at least from my IT guy, that they can hear us and are gonna be able to transcribe it since we're making a record. I had some general questions, um, with respect to the, the general nature of the, the tracks that are gonna be required. How many tracks of property total are there? And I didn't catch your name again, I'm sorry.
Fernando Samanero.
Okay. How many tracks of property?
We have two tracks of property.
And Plus Power is not the owner?
We have a, we have an option to purchase.
Okay. So are you the developer as well as having, owning that option?
It's under Plus Power, we are the one that has the options to purchase, and we're gonna be the ones to open the project.
Are there additional, are there any additional agreements with respect to having that option? Like is it, are you selling it to someone else?
No.
The acreage, how many owners are there of the tracks? Are there two owners of two tracks?
Yes, it's two different owners.
Okay. And, um, how many acres?
I don't know, I have, it's around 30 and 36, I think, each track or.
That's a total on, on both those, correct?
Correct, yes. Not all of it's gonna be developed, that's the tracks that we have in the site plan and the tracks that we have under option to purchase, but as you can see in the site plan, there's only a piece that is affected, really it's not the whole, both parts.
And who owns the substation property?
Substation is owned by TBA.
Our resolution, or the resolution representative reference was 2023-16. I, I had some questions just in general about your site plan and the, and the packet that you all, uh, had, had submitted. The Section 717B says included at the time of the site plan submitted would be an energy response plan, I'm sorry, an emergency response plan that has been developed and approved by the Jefferson County EMA. The first question with respect to the, I, I just looked in general at the emergency response plan, is that a draft, that's a draft plan, correct?
That's draft, and the reason being because we need to basically work with the site plan to be able to have a site plan approved, so then have the correct.
So that's not a final emergency response plan?
Yeah, it cannot be until the site plan approves.
And so, uh, the, the Jefferson County EMA has not approved the, the emergency response plan, correct?
Correct, because the site plan needs to be approved for that. We just kinda have a, if the site plan is not final, we can't have a final, otherwise it will change, it will be something that will change inherently.
So has anybody at the Jefferson County EMA reviewed the site plan or had any involvement developing the site plan?
No.
I'm sorry, strike, I'm, I'm sorry. With respect to the emergency response plan, has anybody at Jefferson County Emergency Management Association or agency reviewed the site plan or had any input into, I'm sorry, the emergency response plan or had any involvement in developing the emergency response plan?
No, we submit it as a draft, and then once the site plan, we have guidance from the site plan. If there's anything else that needs to change, then we would, uh, submit it to get it to the final form.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's the Jefferson County Emergency Management Agency or Association. But the, the, with respect to 717B, the, the requirement is that at the time, uh, that, that would be included, the time of the, of the site plan submitted would be their involvement. That's why I was asking if they had looked at it or reviewed it or had any, they might have any involvement developing that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the last part of that, the last two words of, of 717B indicate there's a Fisher report. Now, our ordinance that you referenced is F-I-S-S-U-R-E. My question to you is, were, did you all perform any geological studies or seismological studies regarding the placement of this facility on these two tracks?
Yes, we have done geotechnical studies for both, but in the Fisher, I think that was a typo at the time. I mean, you can talk with the, the commission about it, but the report was supposed to be the Fisher report, that was all about the safety of the batteries, but yes.
I understand that's your position, I'm just saying, as it's written, it says Fisher, so, and you, you said you had the geological.
We have done geotechnical reports.
Do you have those? There's not a part of your packet?
Yeah, they were not requested, but we can provide.
You, you, I'm saying, but you, you haven't provided those to date?
No, we haven't, but they were, I mean, again, it was all about the, the safety part of the, the equation, and that was the Fisher report.
Fisher engineering, which has been submitted to the record.
Yeah. With respect to 717C, uh, it says there's gonna be stamped engineered plans for the storage unit showing compliance with UL 9540 and UL 9540A and standard 855 of the NFPA are required for any BES use, B-E-S-S, correct?
Correct.
Now, um... Now, I was able to look, and these, I had to use a magnifying glass, but that's, I can't see anymore, but the, I was looking at the first page of this with respect to those engineering stamp. Is this, is this the site plan that you indicate has the--
Yeah, that is.
Okay. My, my question is with respect to the stamp. Up here in the upper right, up here in the upper right corner under codes and standards, it indicates that, it says, "The proposed battery storage product is a Tesla Megapack 2XL compliant with UL 9540 and tested to UL 9540A. The site has been laid out for compliance with the NFPA 855 to meet remote classification, NFP 855 Edition 2023, Section 9.3.2. Other NFPA best project requirements are to be addressed by the owner at the building permit." I read that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it's, with respect to those engineering stamps that 717C is addressing, that's the stamp?
So that's a, the stamp is, yeah, it's a Tennessee engineer that's standing up?
So my first-- Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, we're going to provide more details if you want on that. We have the engineer that's--
Well-- And my first question with respect to that had to do with the fact that the stamp indicates that the, that the site has been laid out for compliance with NFPA 855 to meet the remote classification. I'm going to ask some questions about remote classification here in a second, and I don't know if, and by the way, if at any point you indicate that you need somebody else to, to give me that information, that's fine too. But with respect to the other NFPA requirements to be addressed by the owner, there wasn't a description, at least on the stamp or the site plan that I saw, of which of those 855 NFPA requirements are to be addressed by the owner. Is there, is there that? Because it's not on the plan.
The NFPA 855 standard includes a wide range of compliance requirements from the planning all through installation, commissioning, operation, and decommissioning at end of life. So we cannot comply with, you know, decommissioning or commissioning documentation requirements in this forum. Those are piles of other documents that we submit for discussion in compliance with building officials when we build a project.
I'm sorry, could you state your name?
Oh, apologies. Andrew Young, project engineer.
And I had a question about that with respect to the, because it says at the end of that statement that the other NFPA requirements are to be addressed by the owner at the building permit. Now, again, my question is, are those listed anywhere in the site plan or any of the materials as to which of those 855 requirements the owner's supposed to address?
And the owner's us, and we will comply with all of them. The 855 standards publicly available online, and it's all those standards.
So you're the owner?
Yeah. The owner of the--
Okay.
We will be the installers and the owner of the batteries.
And with respect to the plans on the classifications, I had a, I had a couple of other questions, and I've looked at your reports and your submittals. But with respect to that stamp, it says that this project or the site plan is laid out for compliance with NFPA 855 to meet remote classification. I'm going to ask some questions about that in a second. But one question I had was, has there been a, and I looked at the materials you submitted with respect to the Tesla information, a large-scale fire test? I saw that the Tesla documents, the MP XL2s, had indicated that there was an actual unit test done with 19 units. But with respect to the large-scale fire test, was that in your materials and was that performed?
It was performed. That is equivalent to the UL 9540A test, and that is in the Fisher F-I-S-H-E-R test report that was provided.
Was that the 19 units that were, that were referenced?
Yes, I believe so. Large scale being one battery unit being tested.
And the hat, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, that's okay. If I cut you off, go ahead. The remote classification on the NFPA 855, as I understand it, there are indoor best units and there are outdoor best units. Since this is an outdoor best unit, there's only two classifications. There's remote and everything else.
Correct.
Correct. Now, one of those clas, and the classification's important because that determines whether or not you can get waivers for certain requirements and distances and energy storage, I guess, capacity, whatever that KWH is, I'm not sure exactly what that is. But, so the classification that the plan was developed on was a remote, was a remote classification. And so I had some questions about that. The remote classification, as I understand it, the NFPA, you have to be, is it 100 feet away from all exposures?
Yeah, now I might defer to one of my other colleagues here, ESRG, who's an expert on the actual code itself.
Okay.
I'll ask him to comment.
Sure. So my name is Ben Wizel. I'm director of permitting for Plus Power. Introduce Paul. Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you. My name is Ben Wizel. I'm the director of permitting for Plus Power. To answer your question, we're going to bring up Paul Rogers. Paul is a principal at ESRG Energy Safety Response Group. Paul is a New York City firefighter, retired with over 25 years of experience and actually works and sits representing the fire, the fire industry on the NFPA 855 Committee. So he actually helped to draft the, the standards that you're referring to.
Sir, I have one question.
Sure.
Does he work for you?
He's a consultant.
Is he paid by you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I'm going to, I had some, some questions just about the 855 and the remote classification. The best I can tell, or the best I understand, is that on the remote classification that the exposures have to be at least 100 feet away. Now, my understanding of that is that includes buildings, lot lines, public ways, structures. It has to be 100 feet in all directions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's the way that you get that classification for everybody here in the, in the, in the planning commission, is that you, that's one of the requirements, is it has to be 100 feet away, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Now, that also has to do with how far apart the units have to be. Is that right?
That, that can be determined based on the results of UL 9540A.
But if there's a, if there's, if there's going to be, if they're within a certain amount of, if they're closer than a certain amount of feet, do you have to have a waiver to get that?
The code says, the standard says they need to be three feet of separation distance. But you can reduce that by proving it through UL 9540A, large-scale fire testing.
And with respect to the remote classification, that also has to do with the maximum stored energy. In other words, like if it's a ma, if it's not a remote location, it can only have 600?
600 kilowatt hours.
And if it is a remote location, they can have more than that?
That's correct.
Or do you have to get a waiver for that?
You can, you can have more than 600 kilowatt hours in a remote location, but if you want to go above the 600 kilowatt hours in a near exposure location, which they talk about, you have to prove it through UL 9540A. UL 9540A is the catchall in order to prove things in safety.
And do you have to get a waiver to, from the local fire official to be able to exceed 600?
The local fire official could ask for the large-scale fire testing in order to prove the safety of the system itself.
And increase the amount of energy--
That's correct.
--storage to over 600?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just to clarify, sorry, to clarify, the Megapack 2 that we are proposing in the site plan, that has gone through the UL 9540A. So even, even if that, I mean, for that classification, right, like already complies with that, independently if that has been asked or not.
And I understand that's your position, but I had some questions about that because I'm, I don't know that I agree, but with respect to the, also with this remote location and how it's determined, does that also have to do with, anything to do with fire suppression requirements?
Fire suppression requirements are not needed on a remote location or they're not needed on cabinet-style, which is this, cabinet-style type of ESS.
And as I understand, at least the remote location, the, oh, I'm sorry, the units you're going to put in there, the, the maximum stored energy is, is that 3916 per unit? On the Tesla MP2 XL, whatever they're called?
I don't know the exact--
I think that is. That's my understanding on your, on the product specifications with respect to the, with respect to the Tesla units you're putting in there, it's, they have that maximum capacity of 3916. Do you know if that's true or not? It's more than 600, is what I'm saying.
It is more than 600, yes.
Quite a bit more than 600, as I understand it.
Yes.
And the, the proposal I saw was 275 of those Tesla units, which would be three, at 3,916. Is that correct?
276, yes.
Okay.
Around 250 marwatts, 1,000 marwatt hours.
With respect to the emergency response plan, I had a few more questions about that, whoever is going to answer that. As I understand the, well, first of all, I guess for the, for the commission's benefit, the hazards of the lithium ion battery, the batteries in those best uses are on pages 27 through 30 of your emergency response plan. Is that correct?
Yes, those hazards are addressed in incident scenarios.
And just for the commission's benefit, what is thermal runaway?
Thermal runaway is when the, when the battery actually fails, will heat up and it can no longer extinguish itself, so it will continue to heat up.
And those other, those other hazards with respect to the explosion and the gases and things like that, those are all listed on those pages, 27 through 30, of the emergency response plan?
That is correct.
Now, as I understand, the, the system that's proposed does not have a fire suppression system. You all, I guess, call it a fire protection system, is that right?
Fire suppression is, yeah, you can call it fire protection.
Well, no, I mean, you all called it, I thought you all called it fire prote, I may be, but there's no fire suppression system proposed, is that right?
That is correct.
The fire protection system, which is on page 17, as I understand it, is an internal sparkers system with an overpressure vent that actually ignites or combusts the flammable gases during a thermal runaway event. So what would happen is if there is one, it would actually set it on fire, is that right?
That's only if the, the amount of gas can get to a lower flammable limit. If we don't get to it, it's too lean to burn and nothing will happen.
But there's no, there's no actual suppression system with this project?
There is no, not required.
Also, with respect to the fire suppression of a lithium ion battery best use, I had some questions about the water sources as well. As I understand it, and I have some more detailed questions about your emergency response plan, that water is a necessity with respect to potential fire suppression, is that right?
Water on a energy storage system where is, is, as you can see in our, our emergency response plan, we're not expecting to use any water based on the 9540A. Even if there was an incident that took place, water probably would not be the best option for a couple of reasons.
With respect to the, with respect to the actual plan on the explosion protection, the internal sparking system, is this a situation where if this thermal runaway event occurs, it would basically be a, a burnout strategy where you would let the fire burn out as opposed to suppress it? Is that the plan?
Depending on the number of cell fillers you add. If you don't have the volume of gas to burn, it can never burn. It's too lean to burn.
With respect to the, the water source, I looked at your emergency response plan on page four, and it says the water supply is to be determined, and I didn't see any update on that with respect to the, the plan or your emergency response plan. Is, is that still to be determined? Because there's no, there's no, on your emergency response plan, it's a draft, it only says to be determined.
There is discussions going on right now about that.
Yeah, so following the, the conditions that the planning commission said, there's no requirement for water, as we mentioned before. If it's a UL 9540A tested system, it's actually not recommended to use water in the systems. At the same time, we have heard the concerns from the public on this. We are proposing to have a A water tank. Right now in the, in the site plan, there is a location for a water tank for 15,000 gallons of water. We talked with Eddie Grove and same thing as the firefighter that spoke here, they mentioned the same thing, that there's a lot of challenges to actually have a hydrant nearby. So we look into that and just following the, the concerns from the public, not to use on the batteries, as we mentioned before, it's actually not a good use of water. You're putting water on electricity, it's not a good idea, and it's not recommended by the firefighters, like the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association, is the association that sets all the standards for fire safety, including the exit signs we have here and doors and, right? It's the association that sets the safety standards. They are the ones that are actually not recommending using water.
But it would be a necessity even if you didn't use it to put out the fire to cool the other units? Is that right or wrong? If a fire, if there was a thermal runaway, runaway event and explosion, the water source would primarily also be used to cool the other units, is that right?
Not necessarily. We, if you, if you, if you go and read our report that we did for an incident that took place in Victoria's Big Battery, we realized that water was not doing anything. The battery, the heat was not transferring from one enclosure to the next, and that could be figured out by being able to have access to the battery management system, which is looking at the heat.
On the draft emergency response plan, there's a, on page 14, Section 2.8, it has the following nearby exposures were located in the immediate area shown on Figure 2. It has the main power transformer, but there's, the feet are Xed out, Dumplin Valley AEC substation, the feet are Xed as far as the number of feet from the nearest ESS unit, and the same way with Lafayette Road. So with respect to the exposures on, on 14, the sub, the, with respect to the substation of the TVAs, the power transformer, how far away is that? Well, it says here, main power transformer. Because it doesn't have the feet listed in the report.
The question is the distance between the transformer on our site?
Well, it says the main power transformer. You, it was listed in the emergency response plan as a nearby exposure--
Right.
--which has to do with its classification. do with its classification. So I guess my question is, there's no feet indicated on any of the three exposures on, on your draft report?
Right, and that's in part because the site plan has not been formally approved and the location of the batteries could yet change, so we would update those numbers accordingly. The, the transformers themselves, there is a qualifier in the FPA, which has standards that says excluding equipment normally associated with electrical power system production, such as transformers and the like. That said, our transformer on our site is at least 60 feet away. We don't have the distance shown, but the, the recommended guidelines from this organization, I believe, said that we should be 50 feet away from our substation, so we're following their guidelines.
But, well, with respect to the exposure though, those exposures are within 100 feet?
It, it is, the transformer, it is qualified as standard electrical infrastructure, that's a.
But is it within 100 feet?
Our transformer might be within 100. I mean, I'd have to get them early.
As far as the TVA, I'm sorry. Hang on, second guys.
Are you saying that there's an exception for electrical equipment?
Are you speaking in the microphone, please?
Yes, I'm sorry. Are you saying that there's an electric, there's an exception in the NFPA?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. There is an exception to that set, to the electrical hazards for electrical equipment.
So the 100-foot requirement that, that the attorney's referring to is maybe inapplicable here?
Correct. Thank you.
And I, I don't know that we agree on that, but I understand your position.
Sure.
On the AEC substation, again, I know this is a draft report and it's not been looked at by our EMA. Is there any, with respect to the lot lines, the other structures, the AEC substation, Lafayette Road, there's no feet indicated in, on page 14 for any of those. Is that correct?
It's correct. They are listed there, well over a couple hundred feet.
In the event of a thermal runaway event or an explosion or a fire, with respect to the firemen that will have to respond, and as I understand the plan, is that they would basically stand down and you, the indication would be there not to enter that, to enter the facility. Is that right?
That is correct, based on the UL 9548 testing results from the Fisher, inside the Fisher report.
Does it make sense for us to maybe talk in a little bit more detail about the 9548 results for the Tesla Mega Pack 2?
That's, that's up to you guys. I, I just, I had some questions and then some other folks might have some.
Sure.
But I read that, some of the report with respect to the in case of section, like in case of a fire or whatever else. And my question had to do with whether or not the fire, firemen were to stand down. And there was an indication on page 18 that they shouldn't approach the battery enclosures, and they're supposed to call subject matter experts and the Tesla 24/7 Operations Center. Is that, is that correct?
Before you answer that, so in Tesla Mega Pack 2's 9548 test? I'm just, okay. Okay, is that better? In the Tesla Mega Pack 2's 9548 test, was there fire observed?
No, during the 9548, it was no fire observed during the large-scale fire testing.
And that was the 19-unit, single 19-unit test that Tesla did that was in the report? Is that it?
That's the Mega Pack.
Okay.
So the 9548 test represents a credible worst-case scenario, is that correct?
Yes, the 9548 test is supposed to simulate a worst-case scenario event to see, to collect data to see what happens in the event that there was a fire or some sort of failure that took place.
Do the plans, or did you consult any of the local, the local fire folks down in New Market with respect to the plan, the emergency response plan?
I believe, I, I know we went there. I went there myself personally. I went to the second floor of the actual firehouse and spoke with them and told them what was being proposed. I don't know if the emergency response plan was built out at, at that particular time.
With respect to the fire hydrants, I, there was a legend, on the legend on the front page of the site plan, there's a legend with respect to the, to fire hydrant symbol. But as I understand it, and I just want to be sure, there's no fi, there's no fire hydrant shown on the plans. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm sorry.
That's correct.
Do you know, as far as a, a water line, the number of inches that would be required to have a fire hydrant there? Is it a four-inch?
Six.
Four or six? I don't know.
Six.
Do you have any idea? That's okay. If you don't know, you don't know. That's okay.
Yeah, we don't know, but we did talk with Chidi Grove about it, and they said that it was going to be something that was not, not going to be available from what they have down there.
So we did say they were proposing a 15, we did say we're proposing a 15,000 gallon water tank. Is that based on calculations?
Hey, guys, if we can keep the murmuring and talking down so we can all hear, it makes it hard on us to hear up here as well, so we'll just keep it down, please.
In regards to the water and the hydrants that you mentioned, NFPA does give a, an out or it gives an option for NFPA 1142, which is actually dealing with shuttling of water for the fire department, or having a tank available at the site itself.
Is that on your emergency response plan as far as the water source? Since it says to be determined, I assume not. Okay.
Put a location for the water tank. It's in the site plan, in the actual site plan.
Some other folks might have some questions for you on the commission. I might have a couple more. Go ahead, guys.
Does anyone have a question?
Yeah, one question is, is that, one of the things that we requested was that, based on the decommissioning, and you presented us with one, was a, a proposal for a decommissioning cost. And we had requested three, but you only have one right now. Is that correct?
We did provide the three estimates. It might not be in your package now, but we did, we had the three estimates.
Could you direct us to where those are, please?
Yeah, in the vinyl, it should be at the very back.
Up here. Yeah, up here where they have the resolution. Yeah, I saw the one, but they're in the back.
But also, I, so there is on page, so when we're talking, D, there is like, there are the numbers, and then at the very back on four, there are the actual estimates. Let me go to the back, back on four.
Okay.
There are the estimates from the three companies.
Okay.
There are $6 million, $6.4 million, $8 million, $7.8 million. Some of the three estimates.
Do we have any other questions from the board?
Have one, you submitted us a letter, basically explaining to the board the reasoning that we should approve this. So the question, one of the questions I had was, is, is that?
Terry.
Oh, okay. Okay. So one of the questions I had was, is that you're, are you, you're submitting this plan based upon the basic guidelines that the county had, that the planning commission had in place for site plan? But you've included the requirements or trying to include the requirements that the commission sent to be adopted. Is that correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Because at the time that you submitted this, and basically, the only guidelines that we had officially in place were before we started, which would be our basic guidelines as far as that comes. So, which, in this case here, then, basically, you have tried to fulfill all those that the planning commission presented, okay? But with the changes that were made, you don't meet all those requirements. Is that correct?
And by the changes that were made, what are you referring to, Terry?
To, by the county commission.
Yeah, we don't, we don't meet those.
You don't meet those?
No.
Okay.
Just, just following what?
Okay. And could you, could you explain to me which one of those you think that you don't meet?
The five-mile radius to school.
Okay.
And that is part of, within the letter that we provided, when we actually calculated, a five-mile radius from every school in the county, that would mean that would be summed out, in other words. That's why that would become a substantial change, and that's why we think the process should be, that a change like that where a use that is permitted use is summed up by the county commission should come back to the planning commission following Tennessee law, we kind of like.
Yeah, I, I think just in brief, it is, the five-mile radius was not included, and neither is the hydrants, as were discussed previously.
Okay.
Dana, I have one, one question in that respect. With respect to where the best use can be located, the, is it a requirement under the NFPA or any of those other codes that it has to be within a certain amount of feet of a substation?
No, that's not a requirement. That is more to basically avoid the use of additional transmission lines through the county.
If you had to build the transmission line, wouldn't the wide of way be approximately 50 feet wide to 100 feet wide? Right. So if, in other words, if we didn't build near a substation, we'd have to build transmission lines that would have a much larger impact on the community.
You, you would have to, that, what I'm saying is, is that it doesn't have to be within 50 feet or 100 feet of a.
What, you asked if there's a code requirement?
I'm sorry, or, or any requirement that it has to be right next to a substation?
There is no code requirement that it has to be within a certain number of feet from a substation.
You would just have to build the transmission lines bigger?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, just, a qualifier about that is, following the five-mile radius rule, even if we would like to install a transmission line, there's no place in the county that would be able to, to accommodate this, this type of project under a five-mile rule, which means that that's why it becomes a substantial change, because it affects the applicant, right? If we already applied, and tried to change, that is a substantial change.
I, I would just note, it, a change does not have to, for it to be substantial. The, the setback in the code prior to that change was 50 feet at max, regardless of whether it's prohibited in the county. I think it's just on its face substantial.
I have a question for Mr. Dranin. Is Resolution 2023-16, as amended and passed by the commission with 20 yes votes and zero no votes, is that the resolution that we are to use?
It's the current law of the land, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I've listened to this, and as much as I would have loved to help Ms. Collins tonight, we're in the same quandary right here with this thing. We've got a resolution that says certain things. That resolution, one is, it says at the time of submission, they've got to have a, then talk and approve with the EMA. That hadn't happened. Second is, that resolution says five miles. That's where it is. Next, it says that there's got to be a fire hydrant or a water source. That hadn't been determined. And also, lawyer Dranin brought up something on this thing, and it's a little bit worrisome. Our thing says that it has to have showing compliance. It does not say that it is laid out to be compliant. It says to show compliance. So for those reasons, I'm going to move to deny it.
Can you, would you mind to restate those reasons?
Well, first off, we've got, as I said, it's just like, it's just like our subdivision thing. I need a second, first, for.
I'll second it.
One is, the, the emergency response plan has not been developed and approved with Jefferson County EMA input. Number two, it says on a resolution, five miles. Number three, it says fire hydrants. And number four, it also says they have to show compliance rather than just having it, it doesn't say anything about having it laid out to meet requirements. So based on those things, that's the reason I moved to deny. And it's just like our subdivision regulations. It says certain things, and that's what we're dealing with right now. Whether you agree with it or not, it doesn't make any difference. This is what, what it says right now.
We have the proper motion, the proper second. Mr. Scarlett made the motion, Mr. Ruth made the second. Do we have any more discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Dranin, the Fisher report that you talked about, F-I-S-S-U-R-E, that was not included in this.
They, that's correct.
It did include the Fisher in the report.
There was a Fisher report, but it was not a Fisher report. It wasn't an F-I-S-S-U-R-E report, it was an F-I-S-H-E-R report, which, at least in my mind, has significant.
Wouldn't the resolution need to be amended with the proper wording?
Um, to be clean, yes.
So we did not have a.
At least, at least there were some issues with regard to seismology that had been brought up in geology, and they obviously did reports. And I know that they submitted a Fisher report, not a fissure report. So at least that's a, that's a question in my mind.
Are you going to amend the initial motion to have included?
Yes, that's, that's not us. That's the commission.
Whoa, whoa.
Correct. County commission.
No, I'm not wanting to amend this.
Okay.
No, no.
Okay. All right, so we got a proper motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion? So I want to get one more for the denial, with the reasons.
The reasons I've got, and I don't know if anybody's got any others, but the reason I'm doing this, like I say, our subdivision regulations have certain things. It's the same basis. What we're dealing with right now, what we're charged dealing with, is this resolution. And according to law you're draining, this is the law of the land at this point in time. So it says it has to be, the plan has to be developed with EMA. That's not happened. It says it has to show compliance rather than being laid out for compliance. It also says it's got to have a fire hydrant or water source, or whatever that, that's not determined, and it also says five miles. Those are the reasons for my motion to deny it.
Any further discussion?
One more question for Mr. Dranin.
Okay.
When you, when you spoke about the setback requirements, and I'm referring on page two of Resolution 2023-16, item D. two of resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, item D.
Yes, I got you.
Did the, did the site plan show the, how many feet away it was from the substation?
The, the emergency response plan did not indicate the feet. It was incomplete and a draft in that respect. With respect to the actual site plan, to be candidly, that's, be more of a question for a planner or somebody that would be able to know that. I just don't, I can't tell you whether the site plan actually shows the proper footage. I, I can't tell you that. I can tell you that their report does not indicate what that footage is and that that has significance with respect to whether or not it's a remote classification or not. And that, and it's, that also has significance with respect to the requirements they would have to go through to meet eight fifty-five NFPA.
Well, what I'm, this requirement is in the resolution, so...
Yes, it is.
And it's not, I didn't see it listed on the site plan. Can you all point me to that on the site plan?
Yeah, if you can refer to the actual plan's site, site plan and sheet number ten of twenty-four lists some dimensions stacking up of five plus twenty, plus twenty-two, plus eleven is the distance between the nearest battery unit and the fence of our on-site substation.
No, I'm sorry.
That's the one, yeah. You've highlighted it in orange.
I'm, I'm referring to the battery, the closest battery to the substation.
Yes, that's what that shows. Yeah. They, they, they're highlighted in orange.
It's twenty forty-two eleven.
Yeah, it's a little at fifty-seven feet. Yeah, just so you highlight it there.
Any further discussion?
Move to cease.
Everybody understands what we're voting on here, correct? Okay. All those in favor of denying on the reasons Mr. Scarlett listed, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next item on the agenda was discuss, the land use plan. The next item we have on the agenda tonight is discussion of the land use plan, possible rezoning of Jefferson County. With Jordan not being here in his absence...
They still have the man, they should have the next one. I thought that's what you said last one.
She's planning like, calling to Bainberry, getting them to burn their rate, their area. It's all they like, getting that man dead. And they hadn't called her back until she emailed me yesterday.
Okay, next one.
Mr. Chair?
It takes forever to do that. We knew that when we went in. And when you ain't done nothing twenty-five years ago, you ain't straightening it over
Mr. Chair, I move to postpone item D, discussion of the land use plan slash possible rezoning of Jefferson County to the first available, the first meeting that the map and our planner are here.
We have, hopefully next month, Tim. We have a proper motion. A second. And a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? With that, I will entertain a motion.
One more, like, Mr. Lakin wasn't here when he got elected as vice chairman and he really told me he don't want to really be it. So is there a way you could...
Chicker. I don't, I don't, I'll do it.
Hire somebody else?
He said he'd do it.
Oh, you're doing that? Okay, well...
Well, I had to pledge allegiance to him.
So you want to be chaplain or what? Or you want to be vice chair?
Vice chair.
That's just one, that's just one more step into the chair.
Let me raise my chair.
Okay, is that settled?
Yeah.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so thank you.